I like it. I hear someone whistling while they work. Is that you?
Hello, hopefully everybody can hear me.
I like it. I hear someone whistling while they work. Is that you?
Whistle while you work.
Eric, I forgot my jacket. You and Director Burton.
Marshall, I'm sure you have one in the closet.
Yeah.
I've got one jacket. Folks make fun of me because I wear that one jacket every meeting.
This jacket has made a lot of appearances in the last.
All right, Director Shannon.
Present.
We might, uh, we're waiting on one more. Again, you know, maybe thirty more seconds or one more minute.
Okay.
Okay, Chairman Hanna, you can let me know when you want me to.
Yeah, let's go ahead. Let's go ahead and get started. Who are we? Who were we waiting on?
Uh, Director Clark.
Okay.
Okay, I'll go ahead and get started.
Yeah, let's go ahead.
Yes.
Well, let me just read the, okay, so as Chairman of the Board of the Birmingham Land Bank Authority, I am calling for a special virtual meeting of the Board to occur today, February eleventh, twenty twenty-one. The purpose and agenda for this meeting will be for the Birmingham Land Bank Authority Board to accomplish limited business that is necessary to perform essential minimum functions of the Birmingham Land Bank Authority. So, March eighteenth, twenty twenty, Governor Ivey issued a proclamation authorizing the Birmingham Land Bank Authority Board to meet by telephone video conference under circumstances, under certain circumstances. Hey, with according, within accordance with the Governor's proclamation, this meeting will be held via telephone video conference through Cisco Webex platform. All right, so I hereby call this meeting to order.
Director Hanna.
Present.
Director Watson. Director Hatchett.
Present.
Director Green. Director Burton.
Present.
Director Anderson.
Present.
Director Clark. Okay, we have four members present and that's a quorum.
All right. All right, so what's the first order of business?
Uh, the singular item on the agenda is item two point eleven point twenty-one point one, which is a consideration of the resolution that was proposed, two point four point twenty-one point five, that was tabled from the February fourth, twenty twenty-one regular board meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to share a few thoughts when appropriate.
Yes, you have the floor.
Okay. Um, I think the things that are important to me, that this resolution, I think, attempts to address. There are three things that I think I'd love to hear other board members, uh, kind of thoughts and considerations on. Maybe as we discuss a resolution or another method of moving forward. Uh, and all of this is within the context of, uh, as a board, we're relatively new, even though we've been around since, uh, coming up on six years now. We're relatively new. We're still learning, uh, certain things. We're still growing into kind of our roles and responsibilities and how we partner and coordinate, especially with the city. But there are three things that at least at this moment in time, I feel like we need to, uh, provide a little bit more clarity, um, in order to move forward. One of those is developing an effective method of communicating with all of our partners. And I think we've done this, uh, with greater and greater success, uh, under Mr. Fancher's kind of tutelage and leadership, both in reaching out to the community, but also in reaching out to city departments. But I think communication, it's obvious that we've still got some growth there. We've still got some room for improvement. Uh, so that's an area of focus that I think we can, whether it's through kind of, uh, weekly conversations with, uh, folks on the council as well as in the mayor's office, whether it's quarterly reviews and updates that we provide through the mayor's office and to the, uh, city council. I think if we could develop a formal outline for communication that help everybody just to know, uh, what to expect, when to prepare for stuff, when we're going to get an update on things. Um, so that's one, communication and doing our best to improve communication, um, with, uh, the mayor's office and City Hall, the rest of City Hall. Secondly, I think we need to develop a little bit more clarity, uh, about staffing and the process by which, uh, we identify needs, those needs are communicated, uh, to, uh, because we are fully staffed by the City of Birmingham, uh, and we're fully funded by the City of Birmingham. That necessarily becomes the City of Birmingham decision. Um, but I think if we can begin to provide some, uh, Eric's done a good job of identifying needs that the land bank has, if we can begin to flesh that out and maybe prioritize that, uh, with Eric and his staff's help, as well as kind of have that as a part of our regular communicate, uh, I think that could be helpful. Uh, and you know, I think, as I mentioned in our last meeting, I would, uh, appreciate, um, just, uh, some form of consultation. It doesn't have to be with the entire board, but with you, the chair, or with, uh, you know, a certain group of the board, just be made aware of, um, uh, potential hires. And Ms. Douglas is going to be a tremendous asset, a tremendous addition to our land bank team. I don't doubt that. Um, this is just, it's brought maybe in relief the need for us to be a little bit more clear about what are kind of, uh, how we involve ourselves in that staffing process. Uh, as we begin to stand a little bit more alone, uh, developing additional revenue streams, I think we'll become, um, more intentional about our own hiring, uh, but we're not at that point right now. And so I, I think at this point, I would just ask that, uh, we develop a clear outline of what our staffing needs are and how that communication with City Hall should, um, maybe, uh, evolve. And then third, the third point, uh, with respect to funding, um, I would like for us to have a little bit, uh, better methodology for understanding funding, uh, through, again, our, uh, our major partner, uh, City Hall, um, uh, the mayor's office, uh, just, uh, if we can begin to have a little bit better understanding of, uh, what funding is available, when it will be made available, how we fit into the budget. Uh, again, um, COVID threw a curve ball, uh, at us all, and I know we're kind of all addressing that in different ways. But those are the three things, and I mentioned those three things specifically because I think that's where we are in our growth. Um, but also because Director Burton's resolution is one method of addressing those three things. It's not the only method, but it's certainly one method of addressing those three things. Um, I would, again, be interested in hearing other board members', um, uh, thoughts about that and what's the best, best method for us to begin to advance. And all of those fall underneath this idea of better communication, uh, but how do we advance those three goals? So I just wanted to share that with, uh, with you, the chair, as well as the rest of the board, uh, before we take any action.
Yeah, and.
Thank you, Director Anderson.
And I, I do, I do have a couple of questions and I apologize for not being able to attend the last two board meetings, but I assure you, uh, it's because of client conflicts and not playing golf or tennis somewhere or my personal time. Um, but if I could share my screen, I've, I've highlighted some things and I just have a general question. Uh, I know I'm new to the board and this resolution, uh, uh, just knowing a little bit of history about how the land bank authority was formed and requested to be formed and just the feat that it took to get the, uh, City Hall to have a land bank authority. Um, I, is, is the reason for my questions and, and kind of knowing and working with how the city works with funding, uh, and I agree with Marshall that it is, uh, COVID has made it a little bit more, uh, probably the dollars, uh, more, more interesting to divvy up. And, uh, and so the nature of my question is really is, do we really need this kind of a resolution going there considering the position that we're in with the city of, with, with us being a appointed city board who is staffed by the city at this time? So let me share my screen and I, my, my questions are not, uh, they're, they're really self-explanatory. Uh, and just, some of them are just in, 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 in the form of information. I can't tell if you guys are seeing on my screen or not. I don't think you are. Maybe now you are.
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, so, uh, and, and I remember from the, the meetings that I have been able to attend that, uh, a little bit about this issue, but, um, and have we been funded? Has, is, is this still outstanding? We still don't have an agreement and is this, uh, is, is this board properly funded, uh, as of, uh, right now?
That's a, Mr. Fancher.
Uh, you mute it.
We did receive three hundred thousand dollars, uh, for this, uh, this current fiscal year and, uh, three hundred, a little over three hundred thousand dollars to for staff salaries for this fiscal year.
But is that just for salaries? I'm, I'm talking about for whatever, whatever the mission has been determined and the budget that was set for, I, I guess, I'm asking from even as far back as twenty nineteen as, at this point, since this is still pending approval, just by way the, the resolution reads.
We, the board approved a budget request that was, uh, um, higher than that three hundred thousand, that total of six hundred and some odd thousand dollars. Um, I believe last year, the, the budget request was for one point five million. And prior to that, it was for, uh, four million.
Okay, so, but, okay.
For Chair, I'm able to help answer that question as well.
Okay.
Sorry, I apologize, Director Hatchett. If you, you can continue first.
I was just gonna say, so we're just, from those two requests, we've just received three hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Well, for this past year's request, we, we received, um, six hundred thousand including salaries.
Okay.
So three hundred thousand in cash and then for, as far as personnel related, it costs another three hundred and some odd thousand dollars.
Okay.
So one.
So, uh, Director Burton, just one second, please. Um, Ms. Hatchett, are you, have you, are you done? Are you finished or?
No, I have, I, I'd have one, one other page to go. I just wanted to understand the money that we had received just based on the way, uh, the, these lines in the resolution read, just so I could have a basis of having a discussion once, once we come to, once we come to that, uh.
So let me, let me, right now, we are in the, the process of discussing this resolution and Ms. Hatchett, you have the floor now.
Okay, so, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put a pin in the, I'm, I'm sure through thorough, more thorough this, uh, conversation, I'll understand a little bit more about the pending budget items or the amounts that we need to feel like we can accomplish our mission in twenty twenty-one. So, um, in terms of the, uh, requesting swift pa- passage of the new funding agreement, that's one reason I wanted to understand the question I previously asked, so I kept that highlighted. Um, in terms of, uh, giving Eric our vote of confidence, I think that's a great thing to do so that we can maintain continuity at City Hall for, for the board. And I agree that that would be a good thing to show our support for him as, uh, city staff and continued support, uh, for him to help carry our, our, out our mission. Uh, in terms of the request to swift hiring onboarding, I'm gonna listen out for that because I think I heard that someone was coming on board, uh, so I'm sure that's gonna, I'm sure we'll get to that point. And then in terms of, um, opposing, uh, city hiring, uh, of any new employees to the authority without input from the board, I really, uh, I agree with that position. I'm not sure I would put it in a resolution at this point without knowing a little bit more about what has happened in the past to make this an item that we want to address by a resolution, uh, to the city. So with that being said, I, those are, those are my questions that I'm hopeful, hopeful that we will flesh out in further discussion, um, to, to be able to make a more informed decision on, on the, the edits or the revisions of the resolution.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Hatchett. Director Burton?
Thank you, uh, Dr. Hanna for the floor. I just wanted to start off by giving, um, a little bit of context for some of our newer board members about our funding agreement. Um, something to note is, um, I will start off by saying I have never read organizations like Ruffner Mountain or McWayne, um, like their funding agreement. Um, but, and I, I bring up those two as an example because their funding agreements were recently passed by the city council in December. Um, but from my understanding, uh, since those are fully autonomous organizations, their funding agreement is largely, uh, a statement that says, this is how much money the city is agreeing to give these entities a year, that we'll give that money to them for, uh, X number of years. Uh, I believe the new ones that were just passed for those organizations were three-year funding agreements. Um, but the land bank authority's funding agreement is, because we're a governmental agency, um, and we have a special relationship with the City of Birmingham as all land banks around the country do, uh, our funding agreement is very different, um, and has been in our, was, it, it was in our old funding agreement and it is in our proposed, um, new funding agreement. Uh, and some examples for, for why that is and what that means. Um, our funding agreement is, while it does include a financial amount, um, for a number of years, like the other agreements do, um, ours includes how our relationship works with each department of the City of Birmingham, right? So it includes, what does that relationship look like between the Birmingham Land Bank Authority and Information Management Systems, um, right? Because we have a lot of softwares that we use and a lot of data that we have to process. Um, our funding agreement includes what our relationship looks like between the land bank authority and the legal department, right? Because a lot of the work that we do, uh, is legal-based and it means clearing a lot of titles. Uh, our funding agreement talks about the relationship between the land bank authority and public works. Um, because as we, um, acquire these tax deeds and while they're in the process, we're in the process of clearing title to them, uh, there's a responsibility to the taxpayers for us to, uh, keep those properties cut. Um, so public works is, uh, keeps those properties cut, uh, for the land bank authority, something that we're obviously, uh, very thankful for, right? And so there's a lar- large list of, of things in that funding agreement. And so a large part of our funding agreement is actually not simply, it's not monetary, it's operational, right? Um, and so I recommend for anyone who hasn't gotten a chance to read the, the funding agreement, um, as has been submitted to the legal department, I definitely recommend, uh, reading that. Um, it's something that the, the Board of Directors has put a lot of work into, um, that the legal department of the City of Birmingham has put work into. Um, and something that I believe is a critical, uh, part of being able to move the land bank in the direction that both the mayor and the land bank authority have, have discussed that we want to do, right? Um, and that includes a, a number of different things. Um, and it also, in, it, some of those things that actually includes are a number of the, um, is information that we received from our consultant, Brian White, right, uh, Brian White. Um, and so those new folks who have come on board, I also recommend reading that list of, um, suggestions by our consultant, Brian White, um, that we had from last year. Um, and so this is, this is a, this document, or this, the funding agreement document is really critical for us to achieve those goals, uh, in order to create an effective and efficient relationship uh, with the city, uh, and in order for us to, um, build a long-term strategy related to our goals and, and in order for us to effectively and efficiently do our job for the taxpayers, whose money that we're using. Um, so I just wanted to kind of give some of that context about what the funding agreement is and what it's not. Um, because I, I do think there's, uh, a lot of questions about, you know, what that funding piece is um, and understanding that our funding agreement is, that's only a very tiny portion of our funding agreement. Um, and so I'll, I'll just leave that there for right now and offer the space to anybody else, um, that has any thoughts about that.
All right, the, the floor is now open for other directors or other, other, uh, citizens of Birmingham. All right, so let, let me say a few things about, about this. Um, I do agree that, you know, as a board, that we, we certainly have to have enhanced communication between the City of Birmingham, City Hall, and the Land Bank Authority. Right? I believe that the Land Bank Authority should play a fundamental role in our city's growth, specifically in terms of neighborhood revitalization. And I think that we have a mechanism to accomplish that, right? So absolutely, the ability to be able to interact with the leaders at City Hall is, is very important. From what my initial discussions with the leaders at City Hall have, have revealed is that there is a willingness for open communication and there is a, a willingness to ensure that the relationship between the Land Bank Authority and City Hall is optimized, right? So I joined this board again, and I've said it last week. I joined this board to engage in neighborhood revitalization, to help generate tax revenue for the city and for the county, right, and to empower residents. So one of the things that, you know, I don't, I don't ever want this board to be anything but that, okay? As long as I am checked. As long as I am chair of this board, I will never leave this board in a direction that is weaponized against the city of Birmingham, okay? As long as I am chairman of this board, right? This board will not be used for one individual's personal animosity, right? Because what that does is that takes us off of the focus, okay? And the focus should be the people of Birmingham. It should be neighborhood revitalization. And we need the city of Birmingham, City Hall for that, right? One of the things that I, I have always wanted to see is, you know, how are we, you know, what, you know, you talk, we, there's a lot of talk about emancipation, independence, but how are we going to accomplish that from a revenue standpoint, right? One of the things that I want to see as chairman of this board is financial reporting. And I want to see how many lots we are moving every month. I want to see, you know, this breakdown that I've been pushing for, for a while, a breakdown of what we are doing every month. And that is the accountability. And until then, I find it difficult to support, you know, the resolution. And, and I, as chairman, okay, would like to see the relationship, the communication stronger, yes, but I also want us to do our part. And our part is making sure that we are keeping the residents first, that we're keeping neighborhood revitalization first, okay? So with that being said, if it is the, the will of the, I mean, is there, is there any other business or do we need to bring this to a vote or? Mr. Francher?
I'd be happy.
Can't speak, the item is still up, so.
Okay, well, I.
Yeah, if you, and if you would like the stats from January, you know, we can put that on the screen, but.
Well, no, we, we, well, I think going forward, it, it, I think it's important going forward that the board is, is kept up to date on progress that we are making. Like, I know every month, I know every month we are selling lots, every month that, you know, our programs, our lot acquisition program, our lot lease program. I mean, we are, we, we're definitely productive, but I think the board needs to see that every month, okay?
Yes.
And that, and, and every metric won't be, we won't be able to report on every metric, but some of them we should be able to. And that, to me, is just, hey, this is what we are doing as a board, okay? I think we, is there any other discussion on this resolution?
Yes, Doc.
Yes, the, the floor is yours, Director Burton.
Um, I'd like to, first off, just for, for those who are newer to the board, you know, just to uplift that, you know, our staff does give a, a report to us every month, gives us an overview about where we are in the process, how many lots we have cleared to date, and a number of those things. And I am really appreciative of all of this, the work that our staff has put in to be able to give us a monthly report as they do. And I also would like to uplift our staff in their wonderful work that they've done in giving us an annual report every year. Believe our annual report last year was publicly released around March or April. I know we're on par to release our 2020 annual report, our report from the last 12 months, even earlier than that this year. And all of that is thanks to the amazing work and dedication of our, of our staff. They do an amazing job at keeping us up to date on all of those metrics. And so I really think that that, that really is something that is reflected, right? And, and why last week, the land bank board, at your motion, approved a vote of confidence for Eric Francher and the amazing job he has done as administrator. And that includes keeping the land bank up to date and abreast of all of those stats and all of that progress that we have accomplished. And as such, you know, this, this funding agreement is nothing more, or this, uh, this resolution is nothing more than an effort to build communication. My understanding from last meeting is that the, the city's asking for that, right? And the things that are in this resolution are nothing more than items that we discuss every month. Every month, we discuss in our board meetings where we are in the process of passing our funding agreement. Every month, we discuss, you know, where we are in the, in, in a number of issues such as various administrative things, like cars to legislative items. We, which obviously tho- those two items are not in this resolution, right? But this resolution is nothing more than a list of items that we publicly discuss at our meetings every month. And that includes that item that Director Hatchet brought up about number three on the therefore, right? That was added explicitly because of your motion. I added that explicitly because of your motion last week, right? And so we've got that item, which was passed already last week. And then we've got the, the aspects of the staffing, which the reason why that's listed there is because that was, is taken directly from the mayor's FY 2021 budget, right? He put in the budget those two line items for staff. And so we put it in there, it's not, we're not asking for anything that the mayor hasn't already offered, right? And that includes, you know, even the funding request, the actual dollar amount. We've been defaulting to that the entire time, to what the mayors offered to give us, right? When this was originally submitted to the legal department in September of 2019, it was submitted with a 1.219 million, or maybe it was 3, 39 million request. And the reason why that number was chosen was because we took that number directly from the FY 2020 budget. And I can only speak for myself, but part of the reason why a dollar amount is not listed in this resolution from my vantage point is because we want to take our cues from the mayor on that as our primary funder, right? FY 2021 budget suggests 3, $616,000. As far as I'm concerned, I am happy to negotiate for that to be a discussion with the mayor and land bank for the final draft of that funding agreement to include that $616,000 instead of the initial 1.2 million. And I think, you know, we're seeing that that, if that happens, that's not necessarily specific to the land bank. You know, I know that the conversations from the counselors, a lot of counselors were very concerned that the funding agreements for Rick Wood, McWayne, and Ruffner had a decreased financial amount in their three-year agreements. And the conversation was had, well, yes, we're doing that, but this is a minimum amount, right? So next year, there's the possibility of us giving a higher financial amount than what is listed in those funding agreements. And so I think we're in a similar situation where we, our final one could also include, you know, that amount in the FY 2021 budget, $616,000. And if we work with the mayor in the future, hopefully that will come back to 1.2 million. But I, we're not making, this is not a resolution to make anybody look bad. This is, this is not a resolution to try and hurt anybody. This is simply a resolution to put on paper the things that we discuss that we need every single month in these public meetings. And we just want to make it clear what those requests are so we can submit these requests to the mayor and to the city council in order for us to move forward on this.
Right, so Director Burton, I just, we, we're at 4:37 and we, we only have an hour today. I do want, I want Director Clark to, to be able to have the floor. And we, we will come back to you, Director Burton. Director Clark, you have the floor?
Thank you, Director Hanon. I just wanted to offer a comment about some of the things Rob is saying and just my impression of the whole funding agreement discussion. It, it does seem like there is a very clear process for being considered in the city's budget. It's the budget process and being a part of the city department. I think that may be, I'm not really sure, but that's the funding process. You make a budget request and then you get what you get. I mean, I've been there and, you know, a lot of competing needs. And so it's not often that you get everything you want. And, and it's just, you know, and, and some of that is left to someone's discretion. And I think, you know, a good relationship is really key to being favored in that process. But, but also, you know, it seems to me that this funding agreement is a bit of a misnomer because we are being included in the budget at some level. It's just the, all of the in-kind and interdepartmental cooperation that could make our operation more efficient could be memorialized in this agreement that we are seeking. And I, I think maybe we should call it something else. That, that's just something that's coming to me, maybe it should be. Because when you compare to Ruffner, I mean, those are separate autonomous organizations where, yes, they have a board like we have a board. But this is a very unusual construct to have a board with a city division, that city, exactly. So, I mean, even that in and of itself is a bit of a, a mind boggle for me. And, and just trying to, you know, as I read about, there's a lot of comments, I'm sorry. As I, I read about the vote of confidence for Eric, who, whose work I greatly admire. I mean, but the vote of confidence just made me wonder, you know, how is Eric, Eric's performance evaluated? Is that Chris Hatcher? Does the board chair weigh into that? I mean, for me, it raised more questions than answering them. And I think a lot of that is just due to my newness. And, and I read a lot of things when I was first appointed, I don't remember any of them. I want to stay fresh on this stuff. Like, maybe I read it somewhere, but I don't remember. So, um, I'm, I'm just, I just, the key to moving forward in some, in a more harmonious fashion, that this resolution is not, it just doesn't feel like the way to get there for me. I, I don't see it. I, I know we, we want what we want and we need it to operate effectively, but, but you also get what you get. And so, you know, so what are, what are, I mean, I think there's a consultant report that might be directing sort of our strategy for how the land bank operates. I've not seen that, I'd like to see that. I would just be, not just the metrics on what we're doing, but how that compares to some benchmarks we've set or some goals we need there. You know, so how are we performing against a goal? And are the resources keeping us, or the resource constraints keeping us from meeting that goal? Just so we kind of know where we are relative to something.
Director Clark, if I, if, if I may step in, the, the, the motion last week was in a, a motion of support and confidence for Mr. Francher. And Mr. Francher has done a, a, just a terrific job. And so I, I stand by that. I mean, he's, he's done an excellent job. I do think, with that being said, that some type of evaluation in the future from the board to the administrator and the director is in order. I've never sat on a board where the board didn't evaluate the administrator and director. In terms of the actual resolution, the resolution feels antagonistic to me. And I don't think that we want to, or we're in a position to be, and, and even if we were in a position to be, I don't think it's good business to be antagonistic towards the city of Birmingham, right? These are, these are the people that we are here to serve. And so when I, when I see the, the resolution, to me, it, it just feels, it has a feeling of animosity. And, and that's why it's difficult for me to support that. I stand by my resolution last week. Mr. Francher has been a, a terrific administrator. However, I do, as chairman, I am requesting the, the, the spreadsheet that was prepared by Brad Green some time ago and then passed on to me. And I've added some metrics to that spreadsheet and it only helps us, right? It helps us show our productivity every month, right? And I think that's in order. All right, is there any other discussion?
Yes, I'd, I'd like to ask.
Sorry, Director Burton, we, we were, yes, yes, the floor is yours.
I'm sorry, did some, was that somebody else trying to speak?
Well, Director Burton, the floor was yours.
Do we have, I mean, I know that there's financial information, oh, here we go, it's up. Are we, are we receiving all of that financial information? I know we don't have our own bookkeeper on staff. And that is, that financial information is part of our funding agreement, be able to work with the financial department. I see this thing is up there, so I'd like to pass it, I'll just go ahead and pass this to Mr. Francher.
Yes, Chairman Hanon, we have been working diligently to populate the spreadsheet. Some of the problems that we've run into would have been the, how our money is collected into the city's financial accounts and separating that back out amongst our expenses and our revenues. So we continue to work to separate that out and we hope to have that number as soon as possible to be able to provide and keep these monthly reports populated. But we, we have populated the number of applications submitted, rejected, quiet title, final orders, closings, properties entering acquisition queue, base closing proceeds for the, each month of last year. We are trying to further delve into where each of those numbers goes based on our financial platform and examining the wire confirmations. Again, it's more difficult for us to do that when we're missing, you know, our housing rehab specialist, administrative assistant, and other positions. And, you know, we're still juggling multiple other tasks. So, you know, we see this being an easier task going forward in this year as we have those positions filled. But our staff has, you know, done an outstanding job dealing with the volume of calls, traffic, even during COVID, transactions, and evaluation of applications. And we continue to hope that they will continue to do so. So we have, you know, financials from this past year. Up in the last month accounted for is the month of January. We had 48 applications submitted, 48 applications recep, accepted, 17 rejected, 31 accepted. And so those will be coming into our next board meeting for consideration. In January, we had 22 quiet title final orders, 20 closings, and two properties entering the acquisition queue. I want to talk about our goals. We had a, you know, I want to talk about our goals. We had a lo- you know, that number still needs to be updated. We had substantial goals for each fiscal year. But again, that number changes when we, you know, based on our actual budget allocation. Because you know, as well as I and the rest of our staff, that our quiet title actions, you know, usually cost us around five thousand dollars apiece. Complication uh include the need for survey, including for um higher um quiet title fees. Ranging from seventy five hundred to eighty five up to ten thousand dollars. And, you know, we can't forecast that, but then our best bet is to, you know, give each uh file an average cost. And just operate on those margins so that uh it all makes financial sense. So, you know, if we requested, you know, one million dollars, and I'm sorry, I don't have that information up. But I will um send that to you and discuss if you'd like to discuss offline, um or we can bring it up in next week's meeting. But if we had a budget of a million dollars and we had a goal of. I mean, if we had an allocation of a million dollars and we had a goal to clear title to two hundred properties. You know, that's that five thousand dollars per property. If, but if we only received a certain amount of money. You know, that, that takes down what realistically we can bring in. And, you know, this past year, we changed gears. The money that we spend out. Is going solely now towards strategic acquisition. The majority of those strategic acquisition parcels are not geared towards uh immediate sale, immediate turning of profit. They're geared towards site assembly for infill housing. We have our Director of Community Development, uh Christopher Hatcher on the, on this call. He could speak if you would like on the plan going forward in the Smithville community, the Tennesseville community, Fountain Heights, Druid Hills. On working on uh creating and implementing infill housing. These projects all take time. And um, you know, we can't just say, um, you know, we, we cleared title of these number of properties. And we, you know, we're just going to go ahead and sell it. This is a long-term investment. Development takes a long time. And so during this time, we're, we're working with the City of Birmingham, Department of Community Development, and Planning, Engineering, and Permits to develop these plans. And so, um, you know, in this project, in this um spreadsheet, we are going to add some other metrics too. You know, properties entering the strategic acquisition program, because I think that's important to show that cooperation and collaboration with the City of Birmingham. That investment that the city is making now, the cash that is going to fund quiet title actions. Not the ones that are going to individual citizens that are one-offs, but the ones that we're uh pursuing for strategic acquisition. Those are direct projects um and direct cor- uh collaborative efforts with the City of Birmingham. To implement infill housing, to um interrupt that speculative market that's uh ruining our neighborhoods. And um, you know, we're trying to work to push everything forward. So. You know, we are working to, you know, we're going to add those metrics into, into this piece. But um, you know, we, we have been making best efforts to, you know, fill out this spreadsheet. And present this on a monthly basis. It just, it takes time, you know, we, we wish we had, you know. An accounting assistant on staff that could devote all of their time to figuring this out. That was one of the requests we've made in previous years. And so we hope, you know, in the, in the future, when we have our uh actual administrative assistant hired. That they can play a better role in keeping track of those numbers, you know. If you want to, we can definitely, you know, work to maybe stop applications for a couple of months. And, and, and maybe hit the reset so we can focus staff time on, on that bookkeeping effort. And that's what, I mean, we've really been trying to work on that. And we're almost there. But it's, you know, it's just going to take us fleshing out, you know, some of these numbers. We have them, but we like to verify them. Through our actual financial system. We know we have on file, but we're working to verify each and every one of those.
I just, I want to acknowledge Director Anderson and then Director Clark.
Yeah, just uh, a- as you can see, it's a little bit like drinking from a fire hose, uh all of the data, all the information. But if I could bring us just back to focus a little bit about the issue at hand. Um I, I think maybe this is a good segue towards uh, uh this would be vital information. To keep not only the mayor's team, but also city council kind of abreast of and, and having a report like this. Uh I take your point. We've got the information now because of Eric's diligence and his team's diligence. Now we can use this to begin to inform team members. In terms of the resolution, I, I don't think the intent, I can't speak for Director Burton, but I don't read it as being. Uh confrontational and antagonistic, but just because I don't see it that way doesn't mean others won't take it that way. I am, uh, I think, I, I speak for the rest of the board, we are very appreciative of this mayor. Of the team he's put in place to help us meet our goals. Um I, if this uh is seen in any way as uh, uh an attempt. To uh, uh belittle that relationship, let me put that to bed. No, I, I think my goal would be, can we figure out how to communicate more effectively? And how do we do that? Can we figure out how to be a little bit more deliberate in how we're engaged in the staffing uh process? And again, we can't run it right now until we become the, the, the entity that's actually paying to hire staff. We can't uh demand control of that decision-making, at least in my opinion. But we can ask uh politely if we can just be uh, uh kind of included in that process. And then third, uh can we uh figure out a way to use our, uh to advance our funding agreement? Because as Director uh Burton has said, it's critical to our function. And if we can do that without a resolution, fantastic.
Director Clark? Uh you're on mute.
My hand stayed raised from before. I did not raise it a second time. And I think I said everything on my words.
Oh, okay. I, I, I apologize for that. Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you for another shot.
I just wanted to make sure you, you were acknowledged. Alright, uh I think everyone has, has discussed the resolution. Uh on my part, I, I, I really would feel re- much better about the, the. I feel a little bit better about the reporting. I, I would like to see that reporting every month. And um I get it, it's a manpower issue. Um but, you know, we, we. At our jobs, that we, you know, this is our job, right? I understand this is a manpower issue. And, you know, this should not take away from the work that we do to empower the residents of the city of Birmingham. I, you know, I have to say it over and over again, right? The, we should be informed every month about the progress. That you all are making, that we are making, right? And that's, that's all I'm asking. Is that we as a board be informed every month. And uh that is very reasonable. And bef- you know, I don't think we should move forward. I, I will bring, if it is the, the board's wish, I will bring this resolution to a vote. I would, I would much prefer to have the, the reporting intact. And so um, at this point, it is four fifty five and we do have this business on the table. We can bring this to a vote, this resolution. Uh is there any other discussion?
Uh, uh, well, it's uh four fifty six, so I, I move that we adjourn.
Uh, I, I'm sorry, I don't know, I might have, I don't know if anybody can hear me, but I.
We, we can hear you.
Um, so, and Dr. Hannan, if you do not think this resolution is the way forward, what do you think is the next way forward?
Well, I think it's, it's working with the city of Birmingham, we're, working with City Hall. Um they, they have pledged to, to open the lines of communication. And that i- it's a symbiotic relationship. I mean, they, they need the land bank and we certainly need them. I mean, that this, we, 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 this is not, um, you know, it's symbiotic. So I, I, what I encourage is for, like, the agreement, the prior agreement was for. The, the leadership council of this board to, to meet regularly with the, the Department of Intergovernmental Affairs. And eventually with the mayor. And many of these things that we are requesting will be granted in due time. I just think that the, the way that you accomplish things is, is through peace and through negotiation and through compromise. I, I just don't feel like we should shoehorn a resolution. I, I think that builds bad blood.
Yeah, nobody is trying to shoehorn anything. Uh, were you given any kind of? Have you been given any updates about where the funding agreement is in its process to be approved?
So I have not. I have not at this, at this moment. But that, that's a conversation that, that can be had. I mean, that's, to me, that's an easy conversation that it's just a matter of getting everybody to the table.
Okay, do we have a timeline? I mean, I know Director, I know Mr. Hatcher and Dacher and Hilliard are on the call. Are we able to get a timeline or an update from somebody on the call about what's happening related to the funding agreement?
Uh, hold on a minute. Uh, point of order. Uh, this was a, this was a special call meeting to discuss this resolution, right?
It, it, that's why I'm asking questions related to.
I completely understand that, but this meeting was scheduled for an hour. And we've been talking about this resolution. Uh, and we have two more minutes to go. And I have a motion on the floor to adjourn. If nobody's gonna make a motion to, to uh regarding this resolution.
I, I am interested.
Let me, let me, uh, let's, let's address, let's address Director Hatcher's. Motion first. I think I'm the only one that can call point of order, but I, I. No, I understand. Let's, let's address, let's address your, your motion. Is there a second? Okay, so um Director Burton, um let me. Uh as chairman, uh work with the, the Department of Intergovernmental Affairs to get a timeline. Does that, does that sound reasonable?
I mean, is there, is there a way for us to work that out on the call today? I think it would influence our.
Well, we are, we are about to lose, we are about to lose two board members. And after we drop down to a certain number, we can't continue. And I'm just, what I'm trying to do is work with the amount of time that we have allocated.
I, I will make one statement, and then I see Director Anderson's hand is up. I think that getting this funding agreement passed uh is really important, not just in general. Uh but from a, from a timetable position. We are en- we've already started the twenty twenty two funding here. And this, if we don't get this passed, this will be our third budget cycle without a funding agreement in place. This will be a third budget cycle. And. We have been asking for this funding agreement. We, there's been meetings with the mayor related to this funding agreement. We have had our board chair have numerous meetings with the mayor's office related to this funding agreement. We, we need this funding agreement. And we have everybody that's on the call that's needed to have this discussion today, right now. And I would like to know, uh before I make a motion about this resolution. You know, what is our timeline? What is our alternative for addressing this? Because if we have an alternative, I'm happy to not pass this resolution. But right now, I, nobody's presenting us with an alternative. And I don't, maybe I'm missing something, but I seem to be missing somebody giving a proposal. Like, let's have that co- let's ask Mr. Dacher if we can have a timeline today. And then we can act accordingly. And I could say table this resolution for X number of days. Like, we have everybody on the call today, so when you say, I want to talk to them to figure out. So I can get everybody to the table, where everybody's already at the table. Everybody's at the table today. And it is our responsibility as public officials to bring these issues to a close. In order to best serve the residents of Birmingham.
Right. So would anyone from the, the, the city of Birmingham, City Hall, like to respond to Director Burton?
Hey, uh Chairman, uh this is Kelvin Datcher. How are you?
Yes, sir. I'm doing well. Thank you.
Good. Thank, thank you all for, for the meeting today. Um what I can tell you is this, um as you know, these are incredibly uncertain times economically. Not just for the city of Birmingham, but you know, across, you know, the entire country. So um, we, there's no way we can talk of, of give you any kind of certainty at this moment. The city is beginning its budget planning process and we're evaluating our revenues uh for the last year. And trying to project towards uh this, the next fiscal year, fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Um so uh, uh there's a lot of work being done, but you know, and not to be disrespectful, but it's not just the, about the, you know. The, the land bank authority in terms of the, the city's responsibilities, right? We're, we have to fund all of our departments and all of our thirty five hundred employees. And all of the essential public serfs, uh publics uh services that we provide our, our residents. So um we, we can begin to talk about it, I think. And I appreciate your, your, your attitude about and your openness. Uh to, to meet, because it's probably going to be a, a series of meetings, right? It's not a one meeting, let's sit down and, and plot out for the next year. Because, you know, the city has so many fiscal uh responsibilities that, you know, everything has to fit into the big puzzle. And so we, we, we appreciate your openness and willingness to uh, to have those conversations and we look forward to them.
Uh Mr. Datcher, is there a reason why there have been other funding agreements passed uh within the last couple of months? But the land bank's un- unable to use the twenty twenty one budget to pass a funding agreement based on the. I mean, it seems like other organizations are getting funding agreements based on the twenty twenty one budget. Is there a reason why the same thing can't happen for us?
Uh Director Burton, thank you for that question. The, the, the larger question has like, it, it's not just a number, right? I, I, you know, and I don't want to get caught up on the number, um although we all need numbers to plan. I think it has to fit into the larger citywide uh strategy of neighborhood revitalization. Um and where all of those priorities fit. There's no way you can carve out at this point. You know, the, the city's working on for moving forward, right? On projecting past the pandemic, evaluating where we are at this point. And so um, you know, we would ask that, we, we can have a series of meetings to, you know. Give us time to figure out kind of where the city is, project forward to the budget for twenty, twenty twenty two. As we work through our budget hearings and that entire process, which is incredibly large. And we would absolutely love to work with the leadership of the land bank authority to, to do that. And that's where we are.
Um, I agree with your point about it not just being a number. I think that's part of the reason why I want this. I want to make sure that this funding agreement passes, right? Because as you say, it's not just a number. It is our relationship with how we conduct business with the city of Birmingham. It includes our relationship with the legal department, with public works, with inter-information management systems. Uh and with every other department. Um and that, that, these kinds of funding agreements are normal for fun between cities. And their land bank authorities. This kind of funding agreement is an agreement that we had for five years uh through.
With all, with all due respect, the, the, with all due respect, uh Director Burton, the city has been unbelievably supportive of the, of, of the land bank authority. And there's been more resources driven toward land bank authority over the last couple of years than in the lifetime of it since it was founded in twenty fourteen. So, I mean, the land bank authority's work will continue. The city will continue to support it. You know, I, I, I understand why you want the, the project, but it's not as if the land bank authority is not being funded, is not being supported. The work is continuing. The resources are, are still being provided. Uh and so I don't want it to be cast in a way that because an agreement is not in place. Resources are not being driven to the. Uh, and so I don't want it to be cast in a way that because an agreement is not in place, resources are not being driven to the how, to the Land Bank Authority.
Nobody said that.
So let me, so, so, point, point of order. Thank you, thank you very much, uh, Director Burton, and thank you, Kelvin. Uh, I think the, the conversation um is, is, is at its conclusion in terms of its productivity. And so um, I think the, what I, what I gather is that the city of Birmingham is willing to work with us and I will, Director Burton, work to get a timeline. All right, so a- as a matter of business, the, the, the resolution is still on the table and it is, is, if, Director Clark, is she still with us? Okay, um, so at this point, I think we have, I do not think we have a quorum at this point. Uh, because I, there are three board members who are left.
I believe that means that we'll need to come to a close and adjourn. Um, can we get a, Mr. Dacher, is it possible to have a meeting with the mayor's office within the next two weeks to begin building steps to get this matter addressed?
So, Director Burton, let me, let, let, let me propose that I work with Intergovernmental Affairs to get a meeting, to get a, a meeting and a timeline. All right, I'll, I'll do that.
Uh, will you be able to bring us that timeline next?
Oh, certainly, like every, yes, this, yeah, uh, my, my, it, it will be very transparent and I will be more than happy to reveal that information.
All right, I look forward to hearing that update next week at our meeting.
All right, are there any other, are there any other comments or discussion? I, I don't, I don't, I think we've lost two board members. Are there any other comments, discussion? All right, well, the, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion, second.
Second. All right, well, we all have, all have our work cut out for us. Uh, we will talk next time.